Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you change this to the agenda?
Uh, council will note that there was a revised agenda that was sent out today and laid out for the council this evening. The revised agenda includes, um, item B under general business, um, which would be to award quote, um, for monitoring wells.
Okay.
Motion to, motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda's adopted? We have a couple people to recognize tonight. Chris Flagel, am I saying it right?
Yep.
Am I saying it right? Alright. Chris started with the fire department in 2003. In his 20 years of service with the department, Chris completed firefighter one and firefighter two hazmat technician and incident command training. Chris also served as an EMT and as the secretary of the Fire Relief Association for many years. Thank you, Chris, for your service to the city and dedication to the fire department. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Chris for his dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city and the fire, fire district.
Wow, that's amazing.
Alright, Brett Johnson. Brett Johnson joined the fire, the fire department in 2009 as a firefighter slash first responder. In his 14 years of service, Brett completed many trainings to include firefighter one and first responder. Brett also served as the treasurer of the Fire Relief Association for many years. Thank you Brett for your service to the city and dedication to the fire department. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Brett for his dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of, uh, excuse me, citizens of the city and the fire district.
Mr. Mayor, if I could have the liberty of a brief comment?
Please.
Um, so we're recognizing both Brett and Chris for their time as firefighters, and it was mentioned their time on the relief board, and while that's technically not a city position, I think we have to recognize, quite honestly, the thankless jobs that they did for many years. I had the privilege of working with both of them in that capacity, and I think that should deserve some recognition in and of its own.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, next we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to speak under public comment tonight? Come on up.
Gene Mager, 41 West Lewis Street. I just wanna, you can do whatever. I got a postcard from, uh, Waste Management about a month ago, and I was thinking about this, and it says that they may charge $5 for when the garbage cans are overflowing. I think that's a good thing, and I guess I'm asking the city, maybe they can encourage the other two haulers to do the same. I mean, there is an ordinance, and it does say garbage should be contained in a fully closed container.
Yep.
And here last week, I picked up the neighbor's garbage. He was overflowing, windy day. So, that's why I'm talking.
Yeah, no, I think that's a thing that comes down to code enforcement on our end.
Well, that's kind of a shitty thing they have to enforce code-wise. They should have to babysit these people, but the garbage haulers, when they do pick these overflowing containers up, they're just as much responsible. They're, 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 yeah. So, anyway, Waste Management says they may start charging $5. You know, they didn't say they're going to, but may, you know, yeah. But I guess I would like the city to maybe encourage the other two haulers to do the same. That's all.
That's fair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tom Wolf, company commissioner. Just a couple things. This morning, we had a I-35 meeting, and, um, they're actually, I think, getting more on board on fixing things up coming this way more. Is that your impression, Josh? So, um, I'm hoping they at least get to County Route 50 because the next three or four years is gonna be tough on I-35 and, uh, 494. So, if you have a little drone or something in your garage, dust it off and use that to get downtown Minneapolis. We're looking at our levy for next year, and I think we're around the 4% range at this point. So, depends what happens and, you know, how many dollars get shifted our way through state things. The Renaissance seems to be doing pretty good. Um, I was out in Jordan at my dad's on Sunday, and most of my family went through, and they didn't even know it was open. So, uh, years past, they'd have been stuck in traffic for two hours. So, um, and I think they had, the attendance was not that much difference. So, um, other than that, we're finishing up on road projects and, you know, starting to look forward to next year's projects. So, with that, any questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that cares to speak under public comment?
Alright.
There's nothing on the agenda for, uh, your project, so if you do want to talk, this would be.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hey, I'm Martin. Sorry, I live on 230 William Street. There is notion about the sidewalk being put in. Um, where is the sidewalk gonna go, east and west, is what I wanna know? Where's it gonna end, or where's it going to?
Defer to our engineer.
So, it would connect on the north, of course, there's sidewalk on St. Joseph, but on the south, it would terminate at, uh, Paul Street, at that intersection where people would then have to go on Paul Street to get up to Webster, because there's no place to put the sidewalk.
Means such, you know, I'm in the older part of town. There's hardly anybody that walks up the street, you know. It's, I don't think it's really necessary putting a sidewalk in.
Yeah.
Then you park, and like, there's some other people who have shorter driveways. And like, we, at the last meeting, we brought up about, uh, if they're hanging over, you give them a ticket, and if they're in a sidewalk.
Several meetings.
Yep, yep.
Well, I just said there is an ordinance where you're not supposed to block the sidewalk.
Right.
They would have a ticket for it, and we have to.
Right, right. I realize that.
You're not supposed to block the sidewalk.
So, you want us to reconsider whether the sidewalk?
Yes.
Should be in there?
Like to have me look at it again.
Where are we at in the planning process?
Uh, I'm just processing a petition to move the sidewalk from William Street to West Lewis Street.
Okay.
That's a joke for.
Okay. That was a cut-off.
Not funny.
Was not expecting that.
Gee, when everybody laughs, that means it's funny.
So, I, I do have some new information about, uh, potential truck blockage on, uh, putting the sidewalk on the west side. So, we will be revisiting whether we should move it to the other side, and of course, removing it altogether is certainly an option at the council's discretion. Um, but I don't have a, a solution at this point. I know there's new information, and we'll be revisiting it, so.
Has there been any other feedback on this same issue?
Uh, I would expect there will be.
Okay.
But, and I'm aware of, you know, there's other, other parties that are also concerned about the sidewalks.
Got it. Okay. Awesome. Thank you for the comment.
Welcome.
Rhonda Kraska, 321 William Street. How are you, Rich?
I have no joke for you.
Oh, good. So, this is about the assessment that I think is bogus for my area, and when we had talked, this doesn't benefit us whatsoever, and I just really don't see the need for it.
Okay. The, sorry, did you, I didn't.
No, go ahead.
So, we did a benefit analysis test, right?
Yeah.
And what were the results of that test?
So, well, there's two parts to it. Um, Ms. Kraska is actually, there's two parts to it. One, there's the benefit test of the valuation, special benefit test. Is there gonna be enough value there relative to the amount we're assessing? Kraska's position is that they shouldn't be assessed at all because the improvement is not immediately adjacent to their property, and they view that they have special circumstances. There is a bit unique. There are two homes that are served by a drive that is on private property within easement that serves their homes that the city has historically done some maintenance on. So, it's a little bit messy whether that is a public right-of-way through prescriptive easement or not, and if so, how that would be handled in that situation. We actually scheduled next week to meet a staff to look at this issue again based on feedback, additional information that's been provided to us by Kraskas and Tim Simon, who's their neighbor directly across that drive. So, we don't have a conclusive answer at this point from staff, but we are revisiting the issue based on additional feedback we've received.
Is that except, oh, go ahead.
There's another, if you don't mind me.
No, go ahead.
Jumping, uh, complicating factor is that the home is listed for sale or will be soon. I'm not sure which. So, because we've recommended this be in the assessment role, the feasibility report was approved, plan suspects, they technically have a pending assessment which can, and Andrea can speak more to this, cloud a sale or title.
Sure.
It might have to be cleared at the closing, which, you know.
Which I'm not happy about.
So, the urgency is, normally, we really wouldn't have to have made a decision on this till we were looking to assess sometime next year, but this situation does create a burden on Kraska, so we are trying to, um, reexamine the issue in a timely fashion, and if staff feels we should revisit, um, how we're assessing the property from what was presented in the feasibility report, we could come back in a timely fashion. We're hoping that to come back to the council if there's a different recommendation at the meeting on September 28th.
Okay.
And the only maintenance that the city has supposedly done is plowed it maybe twice within the 30 years that I've been there. Otherwise, Tim Simon has been doing it. They brought in gravel once when they tore up the road. Otherwise, Tim brings it in yearly. Other than that, nobody uses it but us, and it's a private drive. Your, whatever you plan on doing doesn't benefit it.
Yeah. And we're aware of those factors, and that'll be considered.
So, it sounds like this is an issue that's kinda already being worked on behind the scenes. Is it acceptable to you to give us a little bit of time to look into it, Mark?
Not really, considering my situation at the moment.
Okay.
Um.
I mean, I don't know that we, as a city council, can take it up and put anything on the agenda like tonight. So, the soonest you'd get anything from us would be in the next two weeks, when, when our next council meeting is.
So, that would be like at the end of September?
Yeah, and I don't know. I can offer you any better than that.
I guess that's all I can ask for at the moment.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak under public comment?
I don't know. It's, I'm Charles Friedas. I own 340 St. Barry Street. Once again, William Street goes by. I'm one of the people that, the sidewalk would encroach on my drive into the garage and so forth. So, I'm just expressing, I, I really don't care to lose my driveway and so forth for parking area, so, for what it's worth. Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Alright, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And consent agenda. Does anyone have any items on consent they'd like removed?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, consent passes. We have no public hearings, so we'll get into general business.
Mr. Mayor, first item under general business is a number of actions related to the preserve development. Renee Christensen, our senior planner, is online, and she will be giving, uh, the report at this time. Renee, can you do it?
Okay. Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Um, as Tom mentioned, uh, we have a development application, uh, related to the preserve, number of action items needed by the council to move this project forward to approval. Little background, RNF Properties owns approximately 155 acres of land bound by County Road 91, County Road 2, France Avenue, and, uh, they are proposing a residential development in this southwestern corner of their property adjacent to County Road 91. Uh, the proposed development contains 13 single-family detached home lots and two outlots, uh, proposed to be planted as the preserve, and RNF has submitted all necessary land use applications, uh, to move this project forward. Um, the area shown in red on this map is the area, um, that is proposed to be to develop with this particular plat. Uh, here is a layout of the proposed plat. This, uh, Street A proposed here to come into the property is, uh, will have 10 single-family homes adjacent to it, single-loaded on one side of the street. Uh, there are a number of, uh, factors, um, related to this property. Most of the property is, uh, wetland and wetland buffer areas, uh, as well as some stormwater ponds. So, um, it has been, um, challenging to, to design this. We think this is the best project at this time. This street is directly across from Aaron Drive, so that will now be a, a four-legged intersection. Um, to the north here is a proposed outlet B that will be reserved for future development and, uh, currently guided to high-density residential. Um, also proposed, you know, are two lots on the southerly side of property that would access off of Evergreen Court and one lot that would access off of Pond Court. The Planning Commission held, uh, public hearings on July 25th regarding, uh, some variances related to the development, rezoning of the property and preliminary plat, and they did recommend approval of all of those applications. Uh, later, it was determined by, um, really review of the Metropolitan Council, uh, that a comprehensive plan amendment related to the development would be necessary, as well as a rezoning of the property to planned unit development. Um, planned unit development is a, a special zoning district that we use to allow some flexibilities and strict standards of certain zoning districts. Um, because this was not anticipated, uh, the Planning Commission did hel, hold a special meeting earlier this evening at 6 o'clock, held public hearings related to the conference of plan amendment to re-guide the property to low-density residential, currently guided to medium-density, um, as well as, uh, public hearing regarding the PUD zoning, and they did recommend approval of those applications. Um, the Parks Commission also did review, uh, this plat. We also, we seek Parks Commission input regarding park dedication, the location of sidewalks and trails in any proposed development. Typically, this happens at, uh, Parks Commission reviews plats prior to the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission can consider their input during their review. Um, but, uh, we weren't able to schedule the Parks Commission review in advance. Um, so they did hear, or they did review this development on August 9th, which was following the Planning Commission recommendation. The Parks Commission has recommended cash in lieu of land dedication for this development. Um, the current development, uh, proposes sidewalks adjacent to proposed lots 1 through 5 of Block 1. Uh, the Parks Commission recommended, also including sidewalk adjacent to lots 6 through 10 of Block 1. Um, and then the Parks Commission also, uh, recommended ultimate, uh, develop, support for ultimate development of a trail adjacent to the wetland area on the RNF property, and I'll display those, uh, maps of those in a moment. Uh, so this is the single-family, uh, development area that is across from Aaron Drive, and the yellow highlighting shows areas where the developer has currently proposed sidewalks in the development, and these are currently contained in the construction plans. And the Planning Commission, uh, was aware, um, of this and, and talked about it, and the Planning Commission was okay with not including, uh, sidewalks adjacent to these lots 6 through 10. Um, however, the Parks Commission had an alternate, uh, recommendation, and they recommended that sidewalks be included. So, tonight, we're asking the city council to be the tiebreaker on this particular item. Um, also to note is, uh, this blue line, uh, will be the start of, uh, what we believe will be a, a great asset to the community, a trail system around, uh, the wetland areas and DNR-protected wetland on the RNF property. Uh, just to zoom out a little bit and, uh, get a bigger picture of how that, uh, trail system could work, um, nothing definitive, but at least we, uh, reserve the opportunity in the future to implement, uh, trail systems similar, uh, to what is shown here. Again, the RNF property outlined in red, and these yellow dotted lines are, um, areas where there's actually kind of current pathways through, through the property, um, which we think as the property further develops could, uh, be converted to a public, uh, trail system or amenity, uh, for the community. So, the developer, um, has agreed to grant, uh, the, uh, city a trail easement over, uh, one of the lots in his development, uh, that will allow us to implement this trail system in the future. And this is just overlaid, uh, again, on aerial photo, so, uh, we will be obtaining a trail easement in this location, and the developer will be, kind of grading a, a bench for that trail. And then on the north end of Pond Court, also, this, the city will be deeded Outlet A as part of this development, and, uh, we would have the opportunity in the future to start this trail system on property that will be owned by the city. So, a couple of aerial photographs. The street will come in here around, uh, this wetland and cul-de-sac. So, tonight, um, the city council is being asked to make, uh, final, uh, recommendation or decision regarding, uh, the inclusion of sidewalk adjacent to lots 6 through 10, Block 1. Council is being asked to adopt Resolution 2363, amending the city's 2040 comprehensive plan to re-guide, uh, this area from medium-density residential to low-density residential. That is a, uh, so the development will be more consistent with its land use designation. Um, adopt ordinance 281, rezoning the property to PUD, and adopt, uh, resolution granting approval of variances. Uh, I didn't describe the variances in detail, but they're related to the design of the road, uh, and they're described further in the staff report. And then adopt Resolution 2365, approving the preliminary plat, final plat and development contract for the preserve. Um, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, uh, boys, I can stop sharing the screen.
Thanks, Renee.
I was gonna say, Renee, maybe you wanna leave that up to, for easier reference for the council for the decision process.
Okay. If you'd like to go back to any maps, just let me know.
Does anyone have any questions on anything?
Just a, a quick question. The, with the current design of the neighborhood and the street coming in across from Aaron, that'll still allow for access to that outlet B, right? Because there has, according to Scott County, there had to be a right-in and a right-out if that were to develop, maybe according to the previous plan or whatever, but with the way that the houses are, that they'll be able to.
Property, yes.
And will there be anything needed for that inter, intersection, I guess I can call it lightly? I mean, with the additional potential, little bit of traffic, more people, I mean.
Scott County's requiring, I believe, a right turn lane.
Yeah.
And I think that's all. End lighting. Um, we wouldn't have any.
Which would be good, because there isn't lighting there right now, except for, um, you know, the Kelly Glenn side, so people crossing that sidewalk, is there lighting there by the, the poop bag thing for the dogs? No, I can't remember if there is or not.
I don't think so.
Okay, so that'll be actually beneficial, I mean, to have something over there.
This is probably a unnecessary question, but because, excuse me, because it's not far from a farm area that we've had issues with, I'm assuming we've done all the due diligence we need to do on water runoff or that sort of thing?
Yes, sir. In fact, I have a plan that we're working on that would help him further.
Got it. Uh, sidewalks. Looks like we have to be the tiebreaker. I guess my question to staff would be, I mean, what's the developer's opinion on this? What's the downside?
Well, it's certainly a cost issue. It's a cost issue. Um, their, um, position was, if we're making this unrequired link to the trail along 91, is there some consideration to not do that last segment to offset the cost? Um, my view was that it's a cul-de-sac, there's four homes down there, the auto traffic is gonna be very low, uh, there's no through street, so, um, that seemed like a reasonable trade-off, but it's, there's really no right or wrong answer.
Got it.
Yeah. I'd just like to note that the city code does require in residential developments that sidewalk be installed on the one, one side of all residential streets. So, I think the Parks Commission was aware of that, and they wanted to, uh, their recommendation was just consistency with the subdivision ordinance.
They felt it made sense to provide for the connectivity, especially since the sidewalk would be connected to the larger, is and would be connected to the larger trail system over time.
Is there a plan from the developer to finish it at some point, or is this, uh, not required at all forever into perpetuity?
Correct.
Their proposal was to not do the red section in lieu of the connection to the county road.
So, then that little yellow section coming in at the bottom of the cul-de-sac would go nowhere.
It would.
It would go onto the cul-de-sac, so pedestrians would be, would need to walk on the pavement for that, for that half a block.
And what I'm hearing is, because of the cul-de-sac nature, there's just, there's not really a big safety risk, because there's not gonna be that.
I've seen worse, yeah.
That's comforting.
That doesn't violate code though, right?
Well, the city's, um, so it'd be a, a variation from the city's ordinance, which requires sidewalk on one side.
And this is proposed to be a PUD project, which provides for those types of flexibilities.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like a sidewalk that, that isn't necessary. I'd be fine with not requiring it.
As long as they do the blue.
They're not, the blue is not proposed and not required.
Yeah, the key is the yellow at that, that end that connects to the trail, so that people don't have to go, I mean, they'll go across there anyway if you don't build something, so.
Yeah, with regards to the blue piece, they will be grading it out, and they'll be providing us an easement. And Renee, are they also gonna be putting up signage, or would that be incumbent upon the city for the future trail signage?
Uh, I do not believe that future trail signage is currently in the construction plans, but we can require that. We do have a signed detail plate that we could request.
I mean, I tend to lean towards the parks and require it. Um, I think it just makes sense in my brain, and I guess, maybe getting back to the initial question, is it a make or break of the project, uh, because of the cost? Um, and not that that would necessarily sway me one way or the other, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I don't have their, the numbers, but I am quite comfortable this, this project's probably very close to not, you know. Everything helps.
Without the sidewalk, though, I mean, cars technically could park on the side.
Yep.
And block the, the road.
That's a good point.
Up on Pete's Hill, where it ends in the cul-de-sac by the trail that goes up by the water tower there, is there a sidewalk all the way through that end of that cul-de-sac?
Well, there's a, uh, let's see. I don't remember.
Alongside the side where the duplexes are.
I know we have a trail that connects to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, but does it go to a, it, I don't think it goes to a sidewalk, so is there not a sidewalk?
I don't think so.
For a portion of those twinplexes?
So, it doesn't go around the cul-de-sac?
Right.
It ends at the cul-de-sac, and you have to walk across.
So, it's a similar type feature, I guess I could say.
On-street parking in these tends to be low. I mean, there can be events and things like that, and you just have to walk around the cars, but, so it's not ideal.
Alright, so I'm a no, you're a yes?
I, I don't know. I mean, I, I can go either way. So, I'm not, I mean, I'm not hard-set on it. I think it makes sense. I think it makes sense to have it, yeah. I think it makes sense to have it, yeah.
Yeah, it does make sense.
Why do you feel it makes sense to have it?
I mean, we talked about the connectability and everything, especially if this is going to be connected to a larger trail system, and you're potentially going to be pushing people through here and encouraging people to connect through here, I think. And that's where my question was, is this just a temporary pause on doing it? I could probably completely get on board with that if in the future it was planned to be developed, then, I don't know. But I'm sure that can get messy when, you know, you don't put it in, and then 10 years down the road, we say we want to put it in, and we have an easement, and then people are like, what the heck are you talking about?
It's very difficult to add sidewalks anywhere.
I would consider this kind of a now or never decision at this point.
I think, I think sidewalk would be...
You like the sidewalk, I do. Amanda, Kate, Chief?
So the applicant had indicated they had a conflict. They were here for the planning commission, they had a conflict for this meeting. They indicated that they could be available by phone if we wanted to add them in. Is this something that you would like us to phone them in?
He's his granddaughter soccer game.
I would love to know if it's adored, if we required, if it's going to be a...
Let's assume it is. I mean, if I were him or them, I would say it is. So, I mean, let's just assume that it is, and then we may, I mean, no, you're right. It'd be foolish to not say.
Well, between the turn lanes, the low-lying land, they're going to have to bring in fill. I mean, there's just a lot of challenges to this site, and I'm, that's just a fact. But I don't have the numbers.
Can we make the council pay for it, since they made us jump through all these hoops?
I don't see why not.
I mean, we could just send them the bill.
Renee, is the applicant aware of the...
Yes, yes.
Parks Commission recommendation, and did they give any specific feedback after they were made aware of that?
No, there's been, there was no feedback, but in my emails with, Beth and Tom, they were absolutely aware that this issue is a hanging issue, and that the construction plans may need a minor amendment to include this sidewalk pending the city council meeting. So, no, honestly, there was no feedback regarding, regarding this.
What was the planning commission's rationale for not requiring it?
Probably going along with Rich's thoughts.
Probably my statement that if it was up to me, if I had my druthers, I'd take that little yellow piece over that red piece.
But we couldn't ask for both as well.
We could, yeah.
Well, one thing that's different about this versus Pete's Hill is Pete's Hill is on both sides. This one's only four holes on one side, so it's definitely a lot of traffic. So I guess I would be okay with not requiring the red.
I don't want to see this, I don't want to see this development go away, so I'm okay with sucking it up and eating it on this one. I don't love it, but I don't want to see it happen.
Amanda?
I'm indifferent. I mean, I think like, I guess it's more of like an aesthetic thing. I think it's just having it go the whole way through as a sidewalk, but with limited traffic, I'm fine if it's not there.
I think it's a safety thing too, and I think if we're going to do it, it should be done right, but I'm, it's... But I, I'm, I'm kind of indifferent to, I guess, ultimately, so I...
Can I make one motion for all these? I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2363, adopt ordinance 281, adopt Resolution 2364, and adopt Resolution 2365. Does anyone want to second it?
Second.
It's a motion by myself, second by Kate. Do we want to talk about this any further? Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, so then is that enough direction then for the sidewalk issue? Do we need to call that out specifically?
We need to call it out specifically with a motion.
So do I have to add another motion?
If you could, Mr. Mayor, we should act on the...
I'll just add to not require the sidewalk section be in discussion.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, passes.
Thank you.
All right, one more item under general business. Tom?
Yes. So the next item under general business was an ad. The council's being asked to approve a quote, an award doc, approved quote documents and award a quote to Trout Wells for the 2023 monitoring wells installation. As part of our appropriations permit process, as part of the OCFER test, as part of that process, the DNR is requiring us to install monitoring wells. These can be installed on the city's property out on the Public Works campus. We do need to retain a well driller, qualified well driller, to complete that work. Part of the issue here is timing. The OCFER test cannot be completed during the frozen portions of the year, because part of the testing is to determine whether or not there's any impact on surface waters based on, during the OCFER test. Obviously, if lakes and wetlands and things are frozen, you are unable to get decent data on that. So as we get into the later portion of the year here, we start to run into a time crunch as to whether or not we can complete it this season. The DNR has also indicated that they would prefer, this is the optimal time of year to complete the work, because irrigation is done, you don't have seasonal melting showers, et cetera, the types of things that you would have in spring. That would also create additional variables with regards to the surface water testing. So basically, late fall is the ideal time to do it. When we were contacting well drillers to start getting initial interest and availability and interest, we were finding that a lot of well drillers were out some period of time, and there was a question about getting it done. So staff took the initiative to go out and prepare quotes to obtain information on who would be able to do it and for how much. We contacted seven area well drillers. Of those, we only received one quote. We had three, we had various responses. We had three that indicated they just don't have the bandwidth to do it, period. We had others that indicated that they don't, they don't do that kind of work. And we had some that just simply didn't respond. We don't believe that extending it any longer is going to yield, the bidding period is going to yield different results. We're not sure that it will yield different results if we go out next spring. And there is a timing issue. So with regards to our appropriation permit, it's not just completing the testing, but there's the analysis afterwards, which could take weeks to several months. If, and we have, as we know, applicants and other construction projects that are dependent upon whether or not that permit is issued and a decision related to it. If we can complete the analysis over the winter, as opposed to during the construction spring, based on a spring conducting of the OCFER test, that would be preferable all around. So we are recommending that the council does award it to Trout Wells. It should be noted that Trout Wells regularly does work for the DNR for exactly this type of work, and the methodology they proposed is actually the better, there's multiple ways in which you can do it. This is the preferred methodology. So we have the right people for doing the right kind of work in the right kind of way.
Since they do work with the DNR, there's no question, they know exactly what the DNR is expecting. The DNR can't come back to us and say, well, you didn't do this, this, or this, right? Because they've worked with them, they understand the...
So we are, we are resubmitting the revised test pump plan tomorrow, and DNR will be aware. But no, this, this company actually proposed a different type of drill technology than we specified. It's more expensive, but they know the business well enough to know that that was preferred, so it is in their price. It's covered in the memo. I know you just got it today, so you didn't get a chance to read it. Just one follow-up to what Tom said. We met with Trout Wells today via, via Teams, and they are prepared to move in October 2nd, and it would take a week or so. They said if they, something got disrupted, they couldn't make it that day. They said it would certainly be that week. So these would be installed in time for our test to begin on October 16th, as we're planning to tell the DNR tomorrow.
I just want to make sure I'm reading this right, that the quote received is higher than the 25 to 40 grand anticipated, and the quote was over 50 grand. So is that potentially we're paying double that?
No, no, not, we didn't know, so the 25 to 40 is a range based on what Dave has seen. We didn't pull out exact, we just asked our consultant, you know, what is this going to cost? That was the range he gave us. So it was definitely higher than we expected. But if I'm honest, cost is not the primary concern right now, it's schedule.
And why, I'm sorry, I know Tommy, you gave a reason, but what is the main reason for schedule being a concern right now?
We have to give the DNR 30 days, we have to get the well done before we can start the pump test, even starting with our preliminary seven days of monitoring, which we have to do before we start pumping water. We're starting to pump water on October 23rd. We have to pump water for 28 days. That brings us up to November 20th. Pushing that out just increases the chances that we're dealing with not only frozen ground or freezing conditions for surface water, we're disposing of enormous amount of water at two locations. If that's freezing on pavement or at the pipes, or, I mean, it's just a nightmare. So we really want to not push this out into the potential or increase potential for Cory's guys to be out there dealing with water in freezing conditions.
If it had to be spring, would it, I mean, would...
So think of it this way, two weeks or four weeks now is actually six or eight months of delay, because we get into winter, we can't do the test until spring. Then the analysis can't happen until next summer, which, that could take months. So by doing it now, the analysis happens over the winter. We'll have a better answer in the spring. If we wait till spring, we may not know anything until a year from now.
How many proposals do we normally, or how many bids do we normally get back?
So what the policy and I think state law requires, if you're under $175,000 of estimated value, you have to get at least, or seek two quotes. We saw it seven. So I think we're covered there. We did only get one. We can't control how many we get, but we did certainly meet the requirements for soliciting the correct number of quotes by going above and beyond.
Just considering to me that we only have one quote back.
Yeah. It's really the time of year. I mean, the three that responded, we don't do that type of work. We don't, are too busy, or both. You know, we had one come back and say, we don't do that, and we'd be too busy to do it if we were. We also got feedback verbally from another one that didn't respond, but we know that they told us before we even sent the quotes out there a month out. So I assume the ones that didn't respond, it's because of the same reasons. It's either not their specialty, or they're just too busy. We, I'm, I feel fortunate that we got one quote at this time of year.
It's only a reason to think that if we waited, the quote would be any different.
It'd probably be worse. If we tried to get it yet for this year, who wants to take on a project like that in November? You know, they're, they're all, they're all trying to finish up the jobs they have on the books.
It doesn't, does it have to be, like, is there something saying it has to be done this year?
Yes. The DNR commented on our test pump plan, requiring these test pump, or these monitoring wells be 500 to 1,000 feet from well four. We chose, and there are other comments, we chose to acquiesce to all of them, because it's quicker to do that than to take two to four weeks with every exchange to try and come to a... We'd be doing it in spring no matter what then, so, yeah.
So it, so it can be done in spring though, technically?
It can technically be done in spring. That's a council policy decision. If that's something that they're willing to entertain, I guess, it doesn't matter to us. We're trying to keep this project moving on to schedule that was planned.
So I think we have to qualify that. The DNR did indicate that their preference would be that it would be completed this fall after irrigation season.
And was it October 1st, or, there was a date?
After October 1st.
So this falls right into the sweet spot.
We have not discussed with them a spring project and whether, if, if there was a choice, whether spring would be preferable to fall. We just know that they indicated that they would prefer fall outside of the irrigation system. So we, to be honest, we don't know how acceptable it would be to the DNR if they had a choice either.
The pumping is the beginning of the test pump, or the OCFER test, it's not the end. There's several months of work that'll probably be happening after we get the pumping done.
Well, I can tell you that Dr. Jennings said that they're looking at how the water moves through the subsoil, and if pumping affects that, if layers are connected, snow melt won't change that, and pumping that much water in a drought isn't a great idea. That's a message from Vita, from Dr. Jennings. So it sounds like to me that if it had to be done in the spring, it wouldn't make that much, it wouldn't make a difference versus being done in fall.
Did, go ahead.
I was gonna say, did the DNR have any concerns about drought conditions in doing the pump test this fall?
No. That wasn't part of their comments.
I think it's, I, I want to just keep what's in front of us in front of us, and that's just, do we accept the bid or not? And at least from my perspective, it's a matter of, is there any benefit to waiting? Are we going to get a lower bid by waiting? My position would be to accept the bid.
I would just think, I mean, at least another bid or two, especially with, I mean, how high it is.
My fear is if we wait for another bid, prices are just going up. You're still going to be paying this kind of price in six months if we bid it for springtime. So, and we have to start the ball rolling at some point, so we may as well just get it going now.
So you're for accepting the bid? Josh, Amanda?
I'm 100% for accepting the bid for a variety of reasons. The DNR is actually doing their job. It feels, and to leverage that and to jump all over that, I think would be good, and to have an agent or a business or a well driller that knows what they're doing, and having the expertise and proposing better technology perhaps to get better readings. I think we're setting ourselves up to just get better information versus waiting and picking somebody else that may, to your guys' point, I don't think is going to be any cheaper anyway, so.
Okay. Amanda?
I don't know if you've just said this or not, but just because they, Trout works with the DNR and just has that level of expertise and for accepting the bid, I think that even if we waited for more bids, we'd probably still be accepting this one anyway.
Don't we have to accept the lowest bid though, by, I mean, typically?
They are the lowest responsible.
Well, they're right now, because they're the only response. But I mean, if we were to wait and someone did come back with, you know, $30,000, that would be saving the taxpayers, you know?
So just to be clear, we talked about waiting for more bids. Bids were due nine o'clock this morning. I gave them as long as I could. I'm expecting no more bids, unless we go back out and solicit.
And you don't, you still think if we went back out and opened it up a little bit longer, that we still would only get one response?
I'd be afraid of even losing the one we have, because now you're pushing them to doing the work another two weeks later in the season, which may be possible, but, you know, we've had Thanksgiving blizzards before too, so.
Halloween of 1991.
Oh, Halloween blizzard, I'm sorry.
1991, yeah, yeah. And because it needs to be this, or you want it to be this season, so.
Well, we want to take advantage of the winter for the analysis, because nothing else can be done anyway.
And I guess I would, I know you were trying to keep us on topic, so I'm trying to stay on topic. But also, you know, with the DNR's recommendation that it be done after October 1st, I think really was, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna be running into this, and I just, I appreciate the thoughtfulness in their responses. I appreciate the city staff and everybody for acquiescing to all of the additional steps that are being required, which is quite a significant amount of steps. So I think for us to be able to keep it moving and to get good analysis and take the time over the winter to do it, I think we're setting ourselves up to make the best decision possible.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2367.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Josh. Any more discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. All right, on to reports.
So the next item on the agenda is a discussion on the regulation of public cannabis use. This is not an action item, but staff is seeking direction whether or not the council wants to do, what the council would want to do, if anything, with regards to local ordinance related to the public use of cannabis. That could include all types of cannabis use. However, based, staff's recommendation is that if you're looking to do it, we would be talking specifically related to the smoking of cannabis. we would be talking specifically related to the smoking of cannabis, um, given the specific nature of that. So, um, the city attorney's office provided a fairly thorough memo that identified a lot of the policy questions and issues associated with the topic. And at the end of the memo, there's just a list of policy questions to help guide the council discussion. And it's a little bit if, if then. If you want to do something, how do you, to what cannabis products would you want it to apply? And where would you want it to apply to essentially? And so staff has no specific recommendations on this topic, but we are looking for guidance from the council. And we would stand for any questions the council might have.
Yeah. Council, you have any opinions on this? We, we have zero opinions.
I don't think we need to do anything at this time.
I would agree with you. I, I, this is one of those things that if there's not a problem.
Right.
What are we solving? I don't know.
Yep.
I, I couldn't agree more. I think the legislature is gonna be back at it, uh, next session, fixing things, changing things. And so what we put in place now, and a lot of cities are putting in place, are probably gonna have to change next year, so.
I agree.
I mean, unless there's concern from chief and, and from a public safety standpoint. But it gets back to the, if there's not a problem, what are we trying to fix? So.
Anyone feel differently? Or do you have, do you have any significant sa- safety concerns? Any more than you probably already have?
I just, my opinion, public safety wise, is it's an intoxicating substance.
Brady, could you turn on your microphone?
My opinion is that it's an intoxicating substance, and we have an ordinance with the other intoxicating substance. And I just, for continuity and what it is, I, my recommendation is to keep it like the other one. Keeping people who are intoxicated and high in private residences, at private places, and not out in the general public, much like alcohol intoxication.
You know, it's actually a really good point, 'cause, you know, my whole basis for everything in this discussion has been, it should align with alcohol. I personally don't care either way, whether it's alcohol or marijuana, but, I don't know, maybe you just flipped me because we should be somewhat consistent with how we...
The major reason for anything intoxicating being in a, a bar or at your house or on private property is because, as a society, we generally don't want people who are impaired, high, drunk, however that is, LSD, meth, crack, you know, name your poison, Molly, roofie, I can keep going. But we typically, we typically, for a public safety, you want people doing that not out in public, where bad decisions can have horrible consequences. Driving, um, on a street, stepping into traffic, picking fights with other people who are going in public. So, um, since you asked, that is my public safety opinion, is I would treat it as any other intoxicating substance. You can go into the question of, well, if you spill alcohol on somebody, they won't get drunk. Smoking cannabis, blowing it into somebody's face, or, you know, they can be exposed to that chemical. That's a whole different topic, but just in general, intoxicating substance usually leads to bad decision making. Keep it in the house, keep it in the bar, keep it in a private residence, not walking down the street, not riding a bike, stuff like that.
Yeah, I can definitely hear that. I mean...
This is something we can revisit though, if it, if it does, we see it as a problem, or depending on what the state does, right?
True.
We're community values based, and do I think we're gonna have people dying all over in the streets? No, but it's just, it, the policy decision, I agree. I don't think our society is gonna fall apart in Elko New Market if you allowed it, but I do think there is a public, increased public safety risk.
Yeah.
So, help me understand, uh, they can't smoke it in public? Oh, sorry, I should turn my thing on. They can't smoke it in public places right now, currently? And our parks are all smoke-free, correct?
They are not.
They are not?
We, it says it on the signs, but we don't have an ordinance specifically prohibiting it.
Okay, well then I just changed my mind.
Smoke, like tobacco?
Correct.
Yeah. Alcohol, we do.
Alcohol, we do.
Yes.
There is a restriction.
Not tobacco.
You can't drink alcohol in the parks. Unless there's a permit.
Then I think we need to address this.
I think we would need to look at it like tobacco then too. We wouldn't have, I don't think we could address one without the other, so.
The only distinction is tobacco is not an intoxicating substance.
Right.
And not regulated as such.
Right, but I can't see allowing someone to smoke a cigarette in a park, but not mari... I mean, I, I understand the difference, but I think it's still, there's, there's also another health component to it. So I think it would be wrong to say that you can smoke your cigarette, but you can't smoke, you know, marijuana, 'cause it's, there's other factors to it as well.
So Gina, you'd, you'd be arguing equivalency, but in a different way.
I'm still for not doing anything right now, to see what the state does and see if it is actually an issue. I'm open to revisiting it down the line. But if we were to revisit it, I think we should put it in the category of, um, or tobacco too, if we're gonna look at, um, a public ban.
If I may, I've been reaching out to some of the other police departments to see what they're doing, and I know Savage talked to the police captain there. Nothing's been voted on yet, but he, his vibe of the council is not in parks, not in any place where children could be, parks, but walking down the street and sidewalks and stuff like that, they're, they would allow it. And Andrea can, might tell you what other communities are gonna do, but I'm...
Most communities will ban it in parks, and also tobacco smoking and vaping.
Let's let the Parks Commission take that up and then come back to us with a recommendation specific to parks. As far as, I don't know, Gina, you flipped me back. Sorry.
I mean, if...
So I'm back on the, let's not do anything.
Well, yeah, I'd be curious, you know, part of, part of the not doing anything side of me says, does the community care? Have we asked? Do we have any feedback from any of our residents, one way or the other? And I guess at this point, I haven't heard anything, so I don't feel, uh, strongly representing either side of it. I mean, unless staff are hearing and getting phone calls of, you know, concerns of problems or feeling restricted or anything like that. So that's the piece of me that says, I don't know what problem we're solving, um, at this point. And then another part of me, you know, watching some of these other cities doing what they're doing, and I've been watching a lot of city council meetings, I have no life, uh, on YouTube and whatnot. And, you know, the concern that I, or one of the concerns that I have that they're doing is they're restricting access to folks that don't live in single-family homes, that are living in public housing entities. So we have to be very careful with, are we discriminating inadvertently, uh, by creating a system that doesn't allow people based on where they live and their social status? To be engaging in things that I could, because I live in a single-family private home. And they may not then have a sidewalk to go to now, if we say it's not allowed on a sidewalk, but we can allow them to smoke a cigarette or whatever, so.
I agree.
But because of the intoxicating factor of it all too, I mean, that's the piece of me that pulls me to that side and says it's just like an open bottle, um, and I could totally get on board with something like that, um, so.
Amanda, you've been quiet on this. Which is shocking for you.
Yeah, I know, I'm usually really vocal. I don't know, I just, I don't think we need to do anything at this point in time.
Kate, you wanna make, make your case at all?
Well, I think that, um, whenever, I'll go along with you guys and not do anything right now, but I think we need to strongly think about it for future, that it needs to be addressed, and looked at. Definitely parks needs, we need to do something with our parks. I thought our parks were smoke-free, I thought there was an ordinance for it. So I thought, well, they're, they're okay, they can't do it in there anyways, but if they can, um, I have an issue with that. I don't want my grandkids going to the park and smelling that junk.
So, would it be fair, 'cause there's been a couple of comments on that, that you were throwing the question of whether or not to prohibit vaping, smoking, smoking of cannabis, the, the whole suite?
And smoking of tobacco.
And, yep, the whole suite, and throw that to the planning, or Parks Commission for a recommendation back.
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
No, I definitely, I also think, sorry if you were gonna move on.
I was.
You know, uh, I really hope staff heard, at least me, in a couple of meetings ago. I want us to look at the municipal side of things and whether or not, um, we can be doing something there. And so this could go along with that. I don't want us talking out both sides of our mouth of, we're gonna restrict, 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 and then we're gonna sell potent, or look at, you know, selling it, those types of things. So, um, you know, I think taking the time to look at this thoroughly, not rush into anything, learn from what other cities are gonna make mistakes with, see what the capital does, or legislature does, um, I think would be beneficial.
Yeah. All right, uh, next item, twenty-four draft budget feedback you're looking for?
Yes, so give me one second to pull up my presentation. So this is our review of the second draft of the twenty-twenty-four budget. Um, you guys have seen this before, I'm gonna cruise through it, but, uh, the budget is a policy document and allocates finite resources and serves as a direction to staff. Tonight, we're gonna review, uh, re-review some of the assumptions, the notable items within the budget. We want, we're gonna present you with an updated tax impact based on refinement, refinements based on new information that were, came up between now and the last meeting. And we are still seeking direction on refinements for preparation of the preliminary budget. We're far enough into the process that, at this point, we're looking for what you want us, the preliminary budget, so, um, tightening it up. We have the usual rules of thumb, basically, be realistic in your assumptions. Match one-time and ongoing, uh, revenues and expenses. Be aware of the need to maintain flexibility within the budget long-term, um, and think strategically in long-term. So what has changed? One of the biggest items that, or the biggest item that has changed is that our fiscal disparities revenue has decreased by over seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, it does fluctuate from year to year. Um, when we put contingency in the budget, we're thinking, hey, it might fluctuate ten to fifteen thousand. If we really need to, maybe accommodate up to thirty thousand. This is the largest I have seen it fluctuate. And, um, it is significant, and it's close to half the contingency. Um, I've made requests to, um, Metro Cities to help us look into it a little bit further as to the why, but I suspect it has to do with the valuation of commercial industrial property declining, um, and the impact on the overall availability of the funds within, that are used within the allocation formula. But I'll have more information on it. Regardless, it doesn't change the, the reality of the fact, the why doesn't change the fact that it is. Planner one insurance, uh, was projected to be higher. We didn't know who would be filling that position, so we used kind of a typical employee, um, assumption. The individual that we're hiring is a single and young, so they're cheaper to insure, so that provided a slight benefit to the budget. And also, uh, in reviewing general liability, um, and going through that, we feel that the, and past trends and getting better information, we think that that could be reduced as well. Granted, these nowhere come near to offsetting the fiscal disparities though. Want to point out to the council that we still have a number of unknowns related to the budget. We would be issuing debt for the twenty-twenty-three equipment certificates and the inter-fund loan. We won't have the final numbers for that until, uh, until the end of this month, so essentially October, to incorporate it into the budget, which would be after the preliminary, adoption of the preliminary budget. The twenty-twenty-four, uh, fire aid and police aid has not yet been certified, and that gives us guidance for what we're projecting for the following year. We won't have that until, uh, September, um, maybe not in time for the preliminary budget. Health insurance costs, we do have an estimate in the budget now, but we won't have those numbers until October. Uh, increased energy costs, we typically reevaluate in that in November, and if you've been to the gas pump, you can see that that is currently in flux. And implementation of the compensation study, again, we won't have that until November. And of course, once we have that, we'll be doing labor contract negotiations. And again, that information won't be available till November or December. So there are a number of items out there that we will, that will remain unknown coming into preliminary budget. Just wanna point out again, every twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars change in the levies, about a one percent tax impact, which is thirteen to fourteen dollars on the typical home. And when we, oh, and when we look at the typical home right now, after making those adjustments within the budget, uh, we're looking at a nineteen point six percent tax impact, so almost twenty percent to the typical home. We should also note, however, that that's, uh, the typical home falls within roughly, represents roughly half of the community, but the other half of the community is not, is actually seeing a depreciation and a valuation. And so the impact would be less, but not substantially. You're still looking at a sixteen to seventeen percent tax impact for the other half of the community. From a levy change, we're looking at a seven, that equates to a seventeen point two, or round up to a seventeen point three percent, um, levy increase. So revisiting real quickly, 'cause you guys have seen these before, the notable assumptions. There's the adjustment for, um, the three eighteen fund deficit reduction plan, the annual incremental increase to the debt funding plan, the reallocation of public work salary expense, um, the two police officer, um, hiring plan, that's been previously discussed and, um, approved by the council, uh, increase in parks capital outlay, um, economic development, um, uh, contribution to economic development fund, uh, increase for community events for fire rescue days and the amount of thirteen dollars, or thirteen thousand dollars. Thirteen dollars. The second half year of the planner salary. And staff, if you recall, had recommended, because of a lot of these unknowns, um, a higher-than-typical contingency at this point in the process. We did provide for the council, and we're providing again, um, a table that kind of groups some of these notable or items or drivers within the budget, um, on a more discretion, less discretion relative to each other. We basically use for factors, if there's an illegal or contractual commitment, whether there is existing or previously established financial plans or strategies, a fiscal policy or budgetary commitments that the council had authorized, existing or assumed debt commitments, or, uh, impact to current service levels. And so we grouped it out this way. If we go through, uh, in the relative discretion categories, and there is some subjectivity to this. The economic development, um, funding, the community events funding and the public work salary reallocation, staff would suggest are areas where you have the greatest discretion. The first two are new spending, um, and the public work salary reallocation, that's our own internal plan, and that could be paused for a year if the council chose to do so. In the moderate area, we have the employee compensation adjustment. We don't know what the impact of that is gonna be at this particular point. Um, there's also the parks capital outlay. Um, in last year's budget, the council in that budget had assumed a five thousand dollars per year increase in our parks capital outlay in order to better fund our existing park system. And after updating that, staff had recommended an additional five thousand dollars this year to just raise the base for five thousand dollars a year in future years. There is some ability to kind of kick the can a little bit on that. It just means that you'll have to make it up in future years. There's also the police officers. Um, neither of those positions have been hired at this point, so there's more discretion with regards to what you wanna do with those positions. There's also different ways in which we could structure how they're financed, and we talked a lot about that a couple of meetings back. There's the three eighteen fund, that's related to existing debt. It's a deficit that we do have to eliminate, and it's a longstanding practice. The debt levy structuring plan, similar to that. The second half of the planner salary, we have the position, it's authorized, and we have an individual starting on the twenty-fifth. With regards to the contingency plan, uh, that is out there, but the contingency, remember, serves two purposes. One, it's a placeholder for expenses that aren't already, that will be in the budget, but we don't have a number for yet. And it's also, um, in a more true contingency sense, um, intended to cover any variances from the draft budget or any unknown expenses. To help illustrate this, we prepared a couple of scenarios. So if we assume the current contingency of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, and we assume that we want to try and cover the entirety of that, the fiscal disparities loss, uh, which is seventy-six thousand dollars. If we assume that there's a three thou, a three percent overall salary market adjustment, and this is just a for discussion purposes, we don't know what that number is going to be, it's just to provide a, um, a reference. We also include the three, a three percent COLA. Again, it hasn't been negotiated at this point. We also include the three, a three percent COLA. Again, it hasn't been negotiated at this point, but three percent's fairly common from what we're hearing, so we use it as an assumption. Then we get to, if we want to maintain in the budget, as we typically have a one percent contingency, we find out that we are thirty thousand dollars short of being able to do that, and we don't have any remaining contingency for any money, any other unknowns or unforeseen changes relative to the projections that's currently in the budget. When we go, and when we make the assumption of a six percent salary market adjustment, everything just gets worse. So, and we brought this up because there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about reducing the contingency from where it is right now, but staff feels that would put us into a bit of a corner. What this does tell us at this point in time is that we may not be able to absorb the entirety of the fiscal, at a minimum, the entirety of the fiscal disparities loss and revenue through the use of contingency unless the council makes other cuts within the budget. So with that being said.
So we're really talking about the contingency, right?
Well, we just wanted to highlight what would, what the contingency is there for.
Yep. I mean, you're not looking for any other direction on anything other than the contingency.
Well, we could, we could, we could.
We're looking for overall direction on the budget, because we didn't receive any specific direction at the last.
And we could punt the public work salary piece for sure, like, that seems easy.
Yep.
Is there risk to do that, though? I mean.
To the public work salary piece?
Yeah.
So what we, if you recall, we'd identified that our current allocation of public work salaries between the various funds is not reflective of where their actual work time is, and we'd updated that and came up with a three-year plan to gradually realign the allocation of their salaries with where they're actually putting their work. That's an internal decision. You could decide to, decide to pause it for one year. Now, it means that you're, you would, if the council wants to continue with doing that, you would just have to do it again. You would just pick it up next year and the year after that. We, it was a three-year plan. We've completed one year of that. I think that's an easy pause, but knowing that you've kicked the can on a little bit on that, and it's still out there for future budget years. But it is easy. It's entirely at the city's discretion. There isn't a service level issue attached with it. It's just saying, hey, we're going to pause it. Put the pause button on for one year.
Can you explain that to me a little more? I'm really, I'm just, I'm kind of confused. Where is it, should it be coming from a different fund, like the water fund, or like where, where else?
So our public works employees are allocated to multiple funds. They have, they're allocated to the general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, and the stormwater fund, because they perform work in all areas. And so with their allocation of their time, there is an assumed percentage of their salary that goes to each of those funds.
Right.
We have been tracking their time for a number of years to identify where their time actually is.
Right.
And what we found is that there's a disconnect between where their time actually is and where we've been allocating the expense. And so this is just simply a budget adjustment to realign the actual work with where we're allocating the expense associated with it.
Okay, so if I'm hearing it correctly, ultimately, should the salary be more allocated to the water sewer fund versus the general?
Actually, it's the other way around. More of it should be, so it has the budget impact from a property tax standpoint is that more of that time should be allocated to the general fund departments versus the utilities.
Got it, okay. I, okay.
Josh is doing math, by the way.
I was wondering.
I'm getting it all figured out.
As our, I mean, as a rate payer for our sewer, water, you know, those base fees, we pay a lot. We, we, we really do. So I just, I mean, neither way, we're also city taxpayers, too. So I mean, either way you, you take it from, it's still, you know, coming from us. But, okay, but, sorry. Thank you for the clarification. Also, can you just clarify too, what the three eighteen fund is again?
So the three eighteen fund was associated with improvements for building James Parkway, Nevada, Avenue and Twenty-Fifty Fifth Street for the infrastructure that serves the properties out by the school. That project was intended to be assessed back to adjacent prop, adjacent developing properties, which included the Dakota Acres development, the school itself, and what would have been the.
Eagleview Estates.
Eagleview Estates properties. And so that was what we would call four twenty-nine project. We'll do it. The city's portion of that project was actually relatively small for some oversizing related to storm sewer. Normally, when we do assessments, staff would recommend that we secure those assessments, meaning that we require the developer to post a security to make sure that those assessments are paid in case something goes south or sideways. That was the recommendation of staff, the city engineer, and the city attorney with regards to this project. The city council at that time felt that, no, the market will correct it if there's any issues, and the risk was incredibly low. And to be honest, up until that point in time, it was rare for those securities to ever be drawn upon. And then the real estate bubble burst in the late two thousands. All of the projects that were associated with, went south. They didn't pay their assessments. The school did. They honored their obligation, but the other ones didn't. We still had to pay those debt service payments, so that burden fell on the taxpayer of the city. As a result, that debt service fund has gone into deficit because there's no revenue coming in and we're paying out. So essentially, we're borrowing from other funds to pay that, to pay those bills. Now, we, we can levy to pay that, and that's what we're doing. Our taxpayers are doing it. But in the early years of this, the council assumed that there would be some development occurring on those properties that would occur, and they would ultimately get caught up on those assessments. And so the levying or putting any burden on the taxpayer was delayed and delayed and delayed and delayed again. And by kicking that can, we got to a point where we had a really big deficit, and nobody that was likely going to be paying, and we still have to pay that. Now, under state statute, when you're dealing with a bond, the bond can be paid off, but you still have a deficit in that fund that you have to repay. You cannot charge any more, levy any more than you levied the last year of that bond's existence. So if we chose not to levy anything, we would get to the end of the bond, the bond would be paid off, but we would not have the legal ability to levy any tax dollars for it, which means we would have to use reserves from the city, which obviously would have a devastating effect on our finances. As we were having the discussion on that situation, staff had presented to the council that we kind of reached a breaking point where we had just enough time left to raise up on an annual basis, twenty thousand dollars per year, how much we were levying to pay off that deficit. So by the time we got to the end of the bond payments, we would be at the top of how much we could levy. It means then that the, the bond would be done, but we would still be levying for a number of years after that bond is paid off to pay back that deficit. And so we have been in that process for a number of years now of working up towards that, but it does mean that the debt service levy is increasing twenty thousand dollars per year as we incrementally increase that levy amount. And the idea of doing that was that we're feathering in the impact over a number of years rather than just boom, dropping it on, dropping on the taxpayers.
Okay. One last question. My curious mind needs to know why there's such a decrease in the fiscal disparities, and I know you're working on that, but will we at least have an answer before we need to vote on any final?
I should have an answer. I should have better information on that by the time we get to the preliminary budget. This was fairly recent.
Right.
I have spoken with Metro Cities. They've already provided me with some really high-level information, but it doesn't get to the specifics, and it doesn't get to the specifics of our city. And I'll be honest, that is a difficult process, because there's one person at Ramsey County that does it for the entire metro area, and it's not always easy getting them to explain what happened in the black box, that is, the calculations for fiscal disparities.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions or initial thoughts?
I mean, this would be great to have a, a new source of revenue, like municipal cannabis sales, to have some more money coming in.
Only cash flow.
Just, you know, already twenty percent of anybody who does it, revenues go directly into at least public safety.
Excellent. Perfect. If we pay for those officers.
No matter who's selling it.
Comments would be, you know, with the fire aid and state police aid, does, those, again, there's nothing that's perfect prediction, but those will likely go up or stay the same. I look, I mean, for the last five years, it's either remained relatively flat or gone up. So we should see more revenue coming in, at least in that unknown thing. Question, when we look at the, the assumptions, or the notable assumptions, is that three point three nine factored in to the, the estimated tax impact that's a little bit further up in the memo?
Yep.
Is it separated out here? So I just want a clarification.
Yeah, so to keep it clean, we just reduced the revenue, which resulted in the increase from the seventeen percent tax, seventeen point four that we were looking at the last meeting, up to the nineteen and change this meeting. So you could buy it down with, you know, you're just swapping contingency dollars for that in whole or part.
Because this nineteen point six percent includes the contingency of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine ninety-four and the seventy-six thousand three twenty as a separate line item.
The, the contingency is in there. What you would be doing is if you wanted to cover the decrease, the fiscal disparities in part or whole, you'd basically simply reduce the contingency.
Which is what your graph did on the next slide, and one of the slides was, it included that. Okay.
The contingency normally, when we have normal fluctuations in fiscal disparities, and you do from year to year, the contingency helps cover that. It's just that this is substantially greater than anything we've ever had in the past. So if you recall, we came in and said, hey, we know that we've got some of these big unknowns out there. I always use the fiscal disparities, because we had one year where we did get nailed late in the season due to an error on the people who calculate the numbers part, and that's why we have the, that's why we have the, the contingency there. This is just well beyond what we would have expected it needing to, to cover. So the impact, it hurts a little bit more.
So that'd be my initial thing, would be remove that seventy-six thousand three twenty from the contingency. It brings it down to a hundred and two. Kick the can on the twenty-five thousand public works. Now, we've saved about a thou, a hundred thousand in the preliminary budget, which decreases it four and a half percent or almost, yeah. So now we're down to whatever that would be. That's a little bit easier to swallow initially. I don't know, that'd be my initial go-for. Do we want to talk about anything with CCEC being in the, the moving of anything? No, not yet? Okay.
So you're, you're kind of suggesting, let's do something straightforward here, and then we can do it. One thing I should point out is we can't adjust the levy. You can still work, so you're going to adjust your cap down. You can still rework the numbers.
We'll still be able to play with that pool of money, depending on how all the unknown shake out.
Correct. So you could come back and say, oh, well, we were going to do that, but now we're only going to cover X percent, but that frees up money to go someplace else. So you're, you're still moving chess pieces around the board. The board just is a little smaller. You're just defining a smaller board.
Okay, we have suggestion from Josh. Any other thoughts?
Can you refresh my memory on that sixty-three thousand? Is that the thing that we adjusted on the board last meeting?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
And Kelly and I were just looking at that again this afternoon, and at this point, we, it's, it's tight. We'll, we'll keep looking, once we get the other, once we get the, issue the equipment certificates, and we have actuals, we'll revisit it. But you're not going to be able to sneak thousands of dollars. You might get a few thousand a year if, if, and from a positive standpoint. It's not like you're going to have, there's going to be a radical revelation within the financial model that will give us a he, enough to even cover a quarter of, you know, half a percent.
All right, then I kind of agree with Josh's ideas.
What were we at last year for the preliminary? I don't remember.
Twelve and change, I think.
Twelve?
Yeah.
Still lower. Scott County's fault.
It is.
Kelly, was it twelve at this point?
We competitioned.
It was in the low teens.
Yeah.
It was what?
It was in the low teens.
All right, Amanda?
I got nothing.
Gina?
I'm good.
I mean, I'm game with what Josh had put out. I was on a similar line. Is anyone else?
Did I take your cord, too? I'm just the reject today. I didn't have a microphone. I don't have a power cord. Thanks, Josh. I'm just taking this.
So just to be clear with the, oh, sorry.
Is everyone okay with what Josh had suggested?
Yes.
Yep.
I was just going to clarify what was suggested. So I'm hearing that we would make two changes to the current draft of the budget. We would reduce, decrease the contingency by seventy-six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, which is equivalent to our loss in fiscal disparities. And then we would put a pause on the public work salary reallocation for this year.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
I thirty-five solutions and MVTA. Suppose she just wants to actually officially appoint someone. Okay. Hey Gina.
I've been going to this, so I've been going to this, and it's actually been kind of fun again. So, I mean, I'm willing to, I, I'm been, I'm willing to stay on. I've been able to kind of reconnect with like Dan Keely from Burnsville and others. So if, I mean, unless Gina, you're dying to get on it, I'll, I mean, I'm happy to finish out the rest of this year, and then we can reallocate things in January as we typically would.
That sounds good. I mean, I can be your backup for this year.
Okay.
So we just need a, I don't.
Motion?
Yeah, to, to confirm Josh through the end of the year, and Gina's the alternate.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Just potentially one more meeting, too. So it's not that big of a commitment.
MVTA? Not that we attend super regularly?
Gina, you want MVTA? You don't have to actually do anything.
Sure.
All right.
So a motion would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to appoint Gina to the MVTA representing.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So on that, Gina, I'll notify the MVTA board, and I'll give them your email address, and you'll start getting all kinds of wonderful information in your inbox.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Is there anything for Public Works to be added?
No, one of the big efforts that we're engaged right now is we're trying to lock down all of the monitoring wells. And we've, administration has engaged Public Works to basically go out and start knocking on doors. So, and so far, they've been pretty effective, so.
Got one in the first day.
All right. Police?
A couple updates. One, the hiring update. We were able to locate two candidates out of the eight that totally applied. We're very happy with the numbers of total applicants of late. Still very disappointing that we're only getting eight applicants, but we did get more than a lot of other big cities, so take that as a positive. The two have met with Sergeant Bell, who's conducting the background check on both. Because they're both were recently background checked at other departments, the process should move very quickly. So we're hoping to at least get one person started here within a month, the first position. But we'll obviously come back for more on that. Quick trip news, kind of as, as we thought it would be a call generator. There's just thousands of people going there every day. It has not been overwhelming, but it has been a call generator for us. Nothing major. Property damage crashes, which I so wish I could play the video, because it's basically two people backing up right into each other. It was very comical. Happens, very little damage, nothing major. So that and medicals, as we called, there'd be medical calls there just because there's so many people. But other than that, they've been a great partner, talking to the other businesses. They've been great partners for the other businesses in town, so we're very excited to have them, and everything's going well there. And then I'm open for any questions you may have. It's been very busy. We've been seeing our fall increase before the winter decline, and starting October first, we'll be back to our, everybody off training, everybody back to their full twenty-four seven scheduling, so.
Do you want to have any questions?
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Engineering?
No report.
All right. Community development?
As I mentioned previously in the meeting, we did make an offer, and it was accepted by an individual for Planner One. The individual we are hiring is Brandon Maleka. You can guess by the last name that he grew up in the area. So he is currently a graduate student at Mankato, I have to say it the right way, Minnesota State University, Mankato. And he should be graduating in December, so we'll have to provide some flexibility in his schedule for him to be able to continue classes through the end of the year. And he looks like he's going to be a great half. And he looks like he's going to be a great asset for us, his first day of work is September twenty-fifth.
All right. Anything addition for parks?
We had a meeting last night. The sole topic of discussion was whether or not we wanted to engage in a program through soil and water for prairie reestablishment in a particular park, that park really is not suitable from a habitat standpoint and doesn't meet their criteria for it. The general discussion is that program is really designed for homeowners and the direction from the commission was that we should make residents aware of the program, so there'll be something coming out on Facebook in the not-too-distant future. And then the other part of it is that they basically had kind of a standing direction that as the city acquires more land for parks, et cetera, that that should be part of a, part of the consideration when we're looking at design.
Okay. C C E C?
I think probably the next meeting will be, next council meeting will be bringing forward some ideas for how to restructure C C E C. When we met last month, there wasn't really a lot of feedback and I don't know how much was shared at the last council meeting because I was not here, but there wasn't a lot of strong opinions or feedback about what sort, what the structure would look like. So hopefully, I think next meeting, we can bring back some recommendations or some proposals. But I honestly kind of feel like I'm being run over over here. If you guys are doing things related to C C E C and you want to take it over, then go ahead and do that. But if that's not the case, I would like to be part of the conversation if I'm the council representative at those committee meetings.
I'm sorry if I was running over you.
No, I, I mean, and I think that was always expressed as if it felt that way, then to make sure to, to say that, so.
We're not trying, we're not meaning to run you over at all, so I'm sorry if you feel that way. Strictly just fire rescue days, that's it. You want to join us?
Okay, I mean, that's where, so then.
That's where open meeting.
Right.
Well, could, but we would need to post all of those meetings and so when you schedule them, you'd have to coordinate with staff to make sure those postings and they'd have to be known far in advance that we can do postings, et cetera.
Well, I just think if you are planning to do something, taking fire rescue days out of C C E C, then like maybe let me know.
You should be involved in the conversation.
But yeah, C C E C meets next week, so that's what I got.
All right. Scale, everyone gets emails like with scale? Okay, I'm not going to spend any time on that unless anyone asks questions. Anything for?
They're actually kind of interesting meetings.
Service delivery?
Nope.
I thirty-five, kind of got a little bit of an update on that.
Yeah, we had a meeting this morning, they updated us on I four ninety-four, project one, basically tearing up the entire, from four ninety, thirty-five west to highway one hundred. It'll take from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six to do that, three hundred and seventy-seven million dollars and lots of headaches between now and then, and then they'll be doing phase two, which will be east of thirty-five to Cedar, I believe. And they had a whole slew of things that they'll be working on over basically the next decade, it feels like. But Commissioner Wolf's comments, you know, we always kind of joke. Any opportunity we get to bring up the County Road Two interchange, we bring it up. So they were talking about the County Road fifty fix and update, so that's been included in some funding. So they're going to continue to make a push for that, or maybe it's not fully funded, but they're going to continue to make a push for that. It's what we just signed a resolution in support of and they are actually going to extend that down to one eighty-fifth, knowing that that is just as important in a bottleneck, so that's when we suggest they should just keep coming further south. But, and then I had a good conversation with Lisa after the meeting too, just some informal comments of, you know, the county's support and, you know, what they're trying to do from the interchange perspective, so.
Any discussion by council?
I just have a question because I was not at the last meeting and the recording, you cannot hear anything. Did we get this figured out where we'll be able to hear what the conversation is during the meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
It's working currently.
I don't, I don't anticipate to miss any other meetings, you know, but I just wanted to be able to listen to the meeting, you can't really hear anything.
If you were talking about the gentleman up at the counter at the podium.
I feel like, because I feel like we could hear, okay, that's what it was just, because there was times where I couldn't hear some people that were at, you know, this table, but, got it.
They're there to work, we need to use them.
Yeah, thank you, that's what we got.
Any motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Amanda?
Second.
Second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.